We had a birthday. All right, welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming this evening. I just want to remind everyone that this is a formal city council meeting. We've had a lot of town halls, so this is a formal one. So, Oklahoma is in effect, you can only speak on agenda items. And then, as far as electronics at this town, you can put away your cell phone and any computers, unless authorized by state law, Texas government code five five one point zero two. All right, so with that, I call this meeting to order. We stand, pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America. I agree with all my friends, you can stand, you're a member of God, and it is a role in the routine justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the citizens, one state, to remember God, one and indivisible. Please proceed. All right, so we have a quorum this evening with Councilmember Jerry Johnson on Zoom. City Secretary, approve of notice.
Thank you, Mayor. The notice for this meeting was posted by 2:00 PM on Friday, February 17.
Thank you. Any public comments?
Yes, Cynthia Solis, Ward Two.
Okay, and Solis, please come on up.
Okay, like your secretary said, I'm Cynthia Solis from Ward Two. I want to go over section eight, number eight, and discussion of the new parking lot on Gallego and Fifth Street. Just a little back history on that. That was implemented because there was no parking for emergency on an event where there was someone inside the church having a heart attack. And the ambulances and the police department had nowhere to park because they were all the way up to the stop sign on the south side of the street, and they were all covered on the north side of the street. Well, so I would like you to consider that because it was for emergency reasons that that was implemented. And then I had also requested section nine, number three. I just wanted to thank council for supporting Skyway because it is in deeply need of housing, even for Chief LaSoya to put his police officers in housing. So, thank you for approving that.
Thank you. City Secretary, any more public comments?
That concludes.
Okay, so there are no presentations, recognitions, or proclamations this evening?
Mayor, I would like to move to suspend the order of regular business and consider action item number three now with item number nine on information discussion to follow.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Okay, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it's good. We will suspend that order. All right, so, action item number three, approved resolution 2023 dash oh two dash fourteen, a resolution approving official support for the proposed Skyway Gardens two development located at the southeast corner of South Walker Street and Machu Picchu. Right? City Manager?
So, in your packets tonight, you'll find.
We're gonna make them up.
Well, I'm gonna give my little intro first. All right, I don't write it back to you. Okay, so in your package, you will find a resolution supporting, just like we did with the last housing project for the Orange Street property, supporting Skyway Gardens two development located at southeast corner of South Walker Street and Machu Picchu. This was a discussion item at the last meeting to provide support so that they can apply for funding. If approved, we will have it signed off on and followed up with Mr. Lopez on a few other items that he needs. This is for the addition of housing in the Skyway Gardens.
Okay. Okay. I need a motion?
I make a motion to approve resolution 2023 dash oh two dash one four.
Okay, I need a second.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, see none. Let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, Councilmember Johnson, so motion carries.
Call for extension.
Are there any abstentions?
I'm one abstent.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, discussion item number nine. Discuss the interlocal agreement with Brewster County in regards to the Alpine Volunteer Fire Department. City Manager?
Recently, our interlocal agreement with the county, which allowed for us to provide dual support for the inner, for the fire department.
You just came out of the bathroom, and so I unmuted it. I muted it, so you and I, I didn't know if you wanted to try to crawl up here, or?
Okay. Jerry, we can hear you. You got him, Gio. Okay, okay, continue. Back on track. So, both the county and the city has been financially supporting the Alpine Volunteer Department, whether it be through finances, whether it be through equipment, whether it be through building space. That interlocal agreement has expired. As a result, the new county judge, Greg Hennington, who is here this evening as well to help speak on this, has decided, let's kind of reevaluate, let's look at this, and let's see what the best benefit is for the city and the county to form an interlocal agreement that works to help support the fire department. His suggestion is to go ahead and kind of come up with a board. So, it takes kind of that responsibility of having the fire department go to the county, go to the city. Mother may I, mother may I, they would report to one entity. This board would be comprised of local residents that could help provide that guidance and structure for the fire department. Currently, you know, we keep kind of going back and forth with, you know, we need inventory lists, we need certain things, the building belongs to the county, but the city has the bigger budget. So, we kind of want to work together. I mean, Greg, you can chime in anytime you would like. We would love to hear from you if you want to come up to the podium.
Sure.
All right, so this is all new, so we're descending down. He's gone before his commissioners to kind of work with the city. We really want to move forward with a plan that would help support the fire department to become bigger and better. Instead of having to go back and forth, they would really become their own entity, and all that Greg kind of built.
Yeah, I'd echo that. So, the goal here is that five years from now, we've got the best fire department west of the Bakers, and I'm not saying we have a bad fire department now. But we, you know, I'd love to see the budget instead of being eighty thousand, three hundred thousand dollars, and I'd like to see some of the best equipment and the best trained folks that we possibly can have. What I, what we'd like to see, and we've had some discussions with your mayor, Judy, City Manager, I would like to see us form a nonprofit board made up of seven citizens from, selected by both the county and the city that would stand between us as funding agents and the actual fire department. So, the fire department itself would report to this board, this board would have oversight for fiscal responsibilities, policies, and procedures, provide some business leadership to the fire department, and frankly, in my mind, probably take a load off. I've been a volunteer chief, was there for, in Terlingua for twenty something years, and it's a tough job to try to do this all by yourself. Find money, get recruits, get people in, train them, so that's, it's a real challenge. And so, I think our money is best spent if we can, if we can put it through a board that we can then hold accountable or proper oversight of the department. We did this in, in Terlingua back in 2005, when we formed an ESD, and it's worked very successfully for us over the years. And so, this is sort of where I'm getting the modeling for this idea. So, that's, that's our, that's kind of our, where we stand is the county. It's been through our court, our court supports this concept, and we've got some work to do to put it together. We'll get with Rod to work on the interlocal agreement. So, the interlocal agreement will still be between, it'll be between us two and the, the new entity. And the new entity would be, you know, we're proposing something like Alpine Emergency Services Board, doing business as Alpine Volunteer Fire Department. And we work out the kinks and the details on that later. So, anyway, I'd love to have y'all's support on that and discussion, and be happy to answer your questions.
Judge, on that, would, you said it would be a board of citizens? Would there be any qualifications for anybody that has had previous experience with policies of that type of thing?
We'd be delighted. I mean, that would be the first choice. And right now, I'm leaning towards having two seats on the board, one would be the county judge, and one would be the mayor on those, of those seven, the remaining five would be picked between the county and the city. With, with the caveat that this county, the county judge and the mayor cannot hold any officer position, simply would be a voice on the board. We don't have to do it that way. But I think we've got some folks in the county that, I don't necessarily, in my mind, I don't necessarily need firefighting experience, although getting some people with that is important. I need people with business experience that understand budgets, fiscal responsibility, how to write grants, policies and procedures, employee manuals, all the things that come with running a, an a board. So, I, I think we'll.
Which you have.
Yeah, well, I think we'll find people to help. And, and we want, you know, we want input from, we want you guys to name so many seats, and we'll name so many seats.
I think that's great, having you and the mayor would have some oversight.
Yeah, you know, you could argue both sides of that coin, but I think we could, I think the mayor and I could have seats on there as long as we're not involved in the, I don't want to be involved in the money side of it or anything like that, but we could have some, we could have a voice on it. After all, we are funding it.
Has there been any discussion with the fire department?
Well, it's funny you should bring that up. We have had attempted several meetings with the fire department. We did, we did have three meetings, and all of those didn't work out. The final meeting we had Friday, we met with one of the captains of the fire department, so I relayed our goal here to them. I don't know if it's been passed on or not.
But the chief has made no effort.
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Judge.
Oh.
All right, so moving on to the city mayor report. Town hall meetings, we, as you know, we've had a series of town hall meetings. It started back last October. We had six in the the fall, and then we have had some town hall meetings trying to organize that data that we obtained from those six town hall meetings here in the spring. We've had four of those so far. We're looking at taking the month of March and analyzing what information we have so far, and then picking up again in April with the town hall meetings for strategic planning. It's very important for us to plan, as you all know, you've heard me say many times. This plan should have started years ago, but we're going to take care of it now and get it done with the help of our residents. And we appreciate everybody who has come and has given us input. Some of the discussions had during these town hall meetings are infrastructure. Of course, it was number one out of the seven hundred and seventy-four sticky notes that we received in the fall. It was number one, followed by employees. In the 2023, the last, over the last couple of months, other things we have discussed are challenges that businesses are facing. What do they need to thrive? Budgets, debt, hiking, biking trails, the importance of shopping local, the possibility of having a chamber of commerce here. The city YouTube channel has received a lot of publicity, I guess. I have mentioned it many times, where you can go in and you can actually watch the meetings. Also, there's a lot of nonprofits in the city that, and the county that we are working with because we realize that when we are working together with other entities like the counties, just county judge, AISD, Sewell Bros., and also the nonprofits, the hospital district, Alpine Community Projects, that we can do a lot more when we work together. And so, other things that we have talked about are some of the, the things that the nonprofits are looking to bring, like the greenhouse nursing homes to Alpine. And AISD took charge and ran with the childcare, and so we have childcare coming this summer in coordination with them. As far as the meet with the mayors, I'm a little bit of a wimp. It's been cold, so I haven't been at the farmer's market as much, but I will be there here soon. I think maybe even this Saturday, I think the temperature is going to be above fifty degrees, and so I'll be there, but I'm also at the town hall meetings. So, you can reach out to me there or by email. Another thing, at one of the town hall meetings, we were discussing homelessness. We've had interviews with citizens that were concerned about homelessness in Alpine at the last meeting, and they, they spoke on it, and Chief LaSoya, he, he spoke about it. He's a superstar. He knows who the homeless are, he knows their history, he's helping one individual get his birth certificate so that we can get services for this person. And so, the citizen group is helping us with brainstorming solutions on what we can do to actually help the homeless. And then, as you know, the city manager, county judge, and Stephanie Elmore, our county emergency management coordinator, and myself have been working on the interlocal agreement between us, the county, and the fire department. I think there's some exciting things that will come from that. If you don't know, our Judge Hennington, he ran the Terlingua Fire and EMS, and he is a certified firefighter and EMT, and so who better to do that than him? Also, I wanted to mention that there's a new possible event that may come to Alpine that I'm excited about. It's a little bit different. It is an African cultural event put on by Annie Hamley, I believe is the way you say her last name. It, how is it?
Hiya May.
Hiya May. So, it'd be a festival in September, if it works out, with music, food, dancing, a fashion show, soccer competitions, and she has three countries that are interested in bringing people here, media groups to participate in this. So, we may hear more about that. Also, a resident reached out to me about a large blue mark on his personal fence, and that blue mark was to help us identify where the meter was, and so we have discussed that, and I believe we are looking at maybe getting little blue flags instead so that we're not marking people's personal fences. The good news is, is that mark actually washes off. So, I volunteered to go with the scrub brush and clean his fence for him, and he said, no, no, he'll take care of it. But I just wanted to mention that, if you see those around, that those are washable, and we are looking at alternatives. All right, and as far as observations and research and what we're doing, the DG Market Construction, the Dollar General, it's going to be a market, which is going to sell food stuff, food items. Over on Highway one eighteen, we're monitoring it, and issues are being addressed. And so, that is my update. City Attorney, your turn.
Mayor and Council. Councilor Rodriguez had asked me to make an update on municipal court, she asked me to give her an update on my dismissals from the case, from the city attorney. And Councilor Rodriguez, this is a printout from the Office of Court Administration done by the Alpine Municipal Court that shows all the statistics from each month of 2022. And so, you have a better understanding of how the court operates. The cases are really not dismissed by the city attorney. The court works sort of jointly. If a defendant comes up and called the court, they may want to work out a plea agreement with me, and after talking with the defendant, I'll talk to the, to this municipal judge, Judge Gilbert. And if he's in agreement, we'll enter into a plea with that person. And that's why that many of these cases get disposed of, but the cases aren't just dismissed because I sign a piece of paper and they're dismissed.
Yes, sir, I'm aware of that, but I'm also aware that it's by your recommendation. So, yes, thank you for that, but I do know how it works. Thank you.
The, anyway, the, the statistics show that in 2022, we generally handled about a hundred cases a month in the court. And probably about fifty of the cases got resolved because people paid their fines or complied with it in some way. And approximately another fifty got resolved because they came to court and they complied, they paid their fine, or the case got set up with a pre-charge or divorce or something like that. But out of the total number of cases last year, there were thirty-seven that were dismissed by the prosecution in 2022, January through December, according to the statistics of the Office of Court Administration.
And that's what those are?
Yes.
Okay. Will I be able to?
There'll be a copy, I'll leave a copy with Gio for you or for anybody in the council that wants to go through.
Okay, and I just asked that next time I ask for something, if you will have it to Gio, so that it'll be in the packet, so I have a chance to look at it before you actually present.
Be happy to do that.
Thank you.
So, any, any other questions? So, they, just, so you get a better understanding. It's a, it's sort of a team deal, you know, I'm the prosecutor, there's a judge, we have a clerk, we have Daryl in the police department, so we're all there working to, on the municipal court resolve the issues that come to, to the court, so it's not just prosecutor throwing things, you know, dismissing things on its own. Let's, let's see, the, we're gonna we'll talk with Gio on ordinance procedures, and we're gonna start getting me involved a little earlier in the process to start reviewing them before they get presented to y'all, so that you have a better assurance that the ordinances that are going to be presented to y'all are legal and sort of comport with other ordinances across the state. I've also been working the last couple of weeks with Megan on AEP proposal on a franchise agreement. Had some conversations with the city and the county judge on the interlocal agreement, and look forward to continuing to try to help the city. Any questions?
Councilmember Johnson, do you have any comments or questions? Okay, he does, he needs to unmute.
I'm not sure if he knows he's on mute.
You're muted right now. Can you unmute?
Muted. No questions.
Okay, good, thank you.
I apologize.
No, no problem.
Megan, on the, on these, could we, I can also ask that the judge start giving some on his office?
Yes, we have them scheduled for quarterly.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, so everyone is scheduled staff or outside is quartered, scheduled quarterly.
Okay. Didn't he recently give one? When was that? November? Okay, so he's coming up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, dear. All right, no city manager report, no city staff update. Let's move on to public hearings. All right. City Manager, number one.
Public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding the second and final reading of ordinance 2023 dash zero two dash zero one in ordinance amending the Alpine Code of Ordinances, establishing chapter nine annexation, adopting an ordinance providing for additional annexation requirements in addition to those prescribed by state law.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak on this? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to public hearing number two. City Manager?
Public hearing to obtain views and comments regarding a special youth permit application for the purpose of allowing the applicant to San Baja Mex Culinary to obtain an alcohol license permit from Texas Alcohol Beverage Commission to sell alcohol to restaurant guests. The property in question is located at nine oh one East Holland Avenue. The record property owner is Audi Collins.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on to the consent agenda. City Secretary?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda contains two items. First item is approval of February seventh, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Second item is approval of the appointment of Eva Olivas to the place seven position on the planning and zoning commission.
Okay, I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it's unanimous. The City Secretary, I should have mentioned that Councilmember Tandy is absent due to family members.
Noted, thank you.
All right, moving on to information and discussion. All right, Chris, come on up.
Advisory Board report. Not hot. Okay.
So, hello, I'm, hi there, I'm Chris Rugia, your director of tourism. I also serve as the city's liaison for the Texas Music Friendly Community Program. And that's something that's run through the Texas Music Office. We applied for the certification, and one of the requirements was making a, an entity that could serve as an interface between the music, community music industry and the city. And so, that's what this board does. Go ahead and go to the first slide. Our most significant item of business that, that we've had since, since beginning has been the noise ordinance that you guys passed recently. And that actually arose because a DJ had an issue at American Legion that there was a noise complaint, and the DJ got a citation rather than the business, and he was upset about that. He came to me, and so we raised a question with the Music Advisory Board, spoke to the city manager, spoke to the police chief, and that kind of started the ball rolling about how we might go about clarifying the noise question because it was unfocused, let's say, that, that procedures were not completely clear. And so, then what we did was we had some sessions to get stakeholder input specifically with music venues because those are the businesses that would, one, be responsible for those citations, once we clarified that. And so, we, we came up with the idea of not only placing maximum limits on the amount of noise that a music event specifically was the context we were talking about, that the ordinance got wider than that. But, but could we also make the, those businesses that are providing this service to the community recognize them in some way? So, that started the idea for making an official music venue program, which became part of the ordinance as well. And so, what that does is, as you all know, but for the folks listening, that gives them, one, a promotional tool that we can promote them as official venues. And two, it gives them the opportunity to not have to get permit after permit after permit. They have the opportunity to get one annual permit, which gives them a live music permit, gives a, that, the entity that holds it, the ability to have somewhat higher volume somewhat later. It's not carte blanche, but, uh, but anyway, that's a, that's most of the business that the Music Advisory Board has done. The rest of kind of what it does is, at its best, in my opinion, it's kind of a clearinghouse for musicians and music businesses, music service people to gather and just compare notes. And so, some of our meetings have been well attended and had a really good kind of clearinghouse of information and ideas. It's been a little less well attended since we moved the events to the council chambers, but we have the Zoom benefits, and, you know, we don't have Gio when we're going somewhere else, so. It's a trade off, but it's worth it. But so, that, that really is, is most of what we have done and do. I also have a mailing list of those, the music industry, as I've been able to get contacts. And so, I tell them about the meetings, but also when I find out about opportunities, or I find out somebody's put out a new record or something like that, I'll, I'll send out emails to, to those folks and try and have good communication. So, then, the next two slides in quick succession. The Texas Music Office, which runs the program, just put out an economic impact study of music in the state, and go to the, go to the next slide. This is statewide, but this is the reason why we have the Music Friendly Community Program. The Music Office is an economic development arm of the governor's office, and so their mission is to communicate about, to the, to the state government particularly, communicate about the value of music economically, and also to then increase. And so, what they're showing here in these two tables is the direct and then total economic impact of the music industry statewide. And so, in billions of earnings, it was a four point five billions earned statewide directly due to the music industry, and ten point eight billion in revenue generally of the music industry. That's direct. And indirect, it was twenty-six point four billion dollars statewide. Now, Alpine isn't quite reaching those numbers yet, but.
Yeah.
We'll see how it goes.
We have a goal in stock, Chris.
Yeah, I'll ask old Green go, and we'll see.
Yes. Councilmember Johnson, any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Did most of the businesses join in?
Well, actually, no one has applied yet, but we haven't quite finished the application process. But we've, the, the idea is that everybody who fits the criteria is automatically official because we didn't want to put any hurdles in the way of businesses that are already hiring musicians. And the criteria are you have a physical location, you are booking live music, and you're paying the musicians that you book.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can you hang around for just a couple of minutes?
Of course.
Thank you. All right, we're going to take a five-minute break. All right, so we're information or discussion items. We are on number two. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, these were items that I had requested to kind of help with the infrastructure and I think this is information that will help us see where we are and where we need to be before we start going out into debt. And I think Megan will try to go in and discuss two through seven since they're kind of have to do with each other.
Yes. Are you guys okay with that? I'm fine. Do we need to call a vote?
Nope.
Nope, okay.
Okay, so the items in question, the first one is assessment of the revenue for the next five years. So this one I have started. It does require for me to create a spreadsheet. Our software doesn't exactly transfer information into a spreadsheet. I need to look at a trend first so that I get an understanding of our past to move forward with the future, to look at our next five years. Based off of this current budget, the recommendation that I had put in the required information in the budget was a two percent increase every year moving forward. To do a little deeper in depth and looking at what we have, things to take in consideration, and let me just say this is all manual entry. So it's taking every line item and manually entering into a spreadsheet and then adding all the formulas. This isn't an easy prediction because the history and future of Alpine isn't planned out or laid out, or oh yeah, we know what we're gonna do. Some of the things that take into consideration are the cost of our fees, what we charge residents, what we charge our utilities, our day-to-day charges, all of those have to be taken into consideration. And from year to year, some councils will approve an increase, other councils will do a decrease. So when you're looking at that, it's a little bit different. Seventy-seven percent of our budget is our property tax and our sales tax. Our sales tax is allocated a hundred percent of what we can collect from this area to our general operating. Trying to fill in for Lisa. The other point five percent is actually goes to the county. These are said, there are opportunities at some point if the city becomes stable and doesn't rely on the sales tax to support the basic operations of the general fund, we could start allocating it to such things as roads. Currently, we don't allocate anything from our sales tax. It is a hundred percent to our general operating. If the city wanted to move forward with that thought process, there are procedures in place. You do have to take it to a vote. You do have to have that approved by the public. So currently, it's been kind of fun. Over my lifespan of the city, I had done little bits and pieces on revenue based off of what the council wanted. So now I'm getting the opportunity to go back and kind of put it all together, examine it. Really, in order to look at the next five years, we, we need to look at that trend. I know there are questions out there, you know, about inflation and what about, you know, changes in rates and how are we gonna handle? Looking at this, from the whole perspective, it's gonna be easier when making those decisions. It's just time consuming. And currently, it is just me doing it.
So can we ask questions in between? Because number one, I'm gonna forget. You did mention just a little bit ago that it depends on the next councils that come afterwards and all that. So should we go into debt and all that? Is there an ordinance or something that would make sure that the debt is taken care of at a certain rate? Like, is there, is there some kind of debt payments that, that we could set?
It is called state law. And so last year, and Chris, I'm glad you brought this up, the city did not have a debt policy in place. So last year, you guys, actually, I think I snuck it under you guys, I'm sorry. I put it out there, but we have a debt policy that does require what we can manage percentage-wise. It's not, you can only borrow one million dollars. There's not any set rates. When it comes to debt, the state of Texas has allotted all cities the ability to raise debt to one point five. That's a dollar fifty. Our current debt rate is point oh three five seven. So we basically have four cents on the dollar. The state will allow us to go up to a dollar fifty. There is no way that I would ever suggest or submit that, hey, let's go out for that full dollar fifty every year. That's a huge impact considering where we're at. It's also hard to understand because, I mean, one of the questions is, you know, like, well, how much can we borrow? Well, we can borrow as much as we need up until that rate being a dollar fifty. That rate is dependent on our property appraised values. So it does fluctuate. If we were to ever borrow that much and not be able to cover it, we would have to make up the, from reserves or from fund balance because we're required to pay the debt. But we implemented that policy last year to protect the city. One, we're not just gonna go borrow money. Two, we're not gonna have an in-depth conversation as if we borrow it, how is it going to affect us the next ten, twenty years? You know, is it a ten-year bond? Is it a thirty-year bond? I believe we actually set a time limit for it. Historically, the city has borrowed anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five years. I believe, and I don't remember off the top of my head, we set it for, I believe, twenty or twenty-five years so that we're not carrying that debt forever. So no, that, we do have a policy to protect the city so that as councils and people change, that you can't hurt the city for the future.
Thank you.
Megan, I might want to add, a good discussion is that there would be two kinds of borrowing the city might do. One is gonna be, you know, like you was talking about, sort of general revenue that the city might borrow based on the total appraised value in the city. The other is gonna be revenue bonds, like for water and sewer. So that can be a different bond issue that would be repaid from that fund. So there's two, two places to look for depends on what projects the council decided are important to the city.
And I can further elaborate on that. We currently, and this is one of the, I'm kind of combining all the information discussion items, just if you guys kind of wonder where I'm at on the map here.
We always wonder where you're.
It's like my brain.
Sorry.
One of the questions that was brought up was the city bond rating and what do we have and where do we borrow kind of deal. So the city does have different bonds. We currently have only three bonds still in effect, which is awesome because when I started, we had nine. They've been from a couple hundred thousand to a couple million. The water is, is significant. This was one of our strategic planning workshops. So out of those three bonds, two of them are not rated. When those bonds were issued by our government and, and, and the issuing agency, we weren't required to have them rated. So there's no rating. So they're, they're not, you know, A for good, B for bad. The only one that we have left that is rated is currently rated in A, and that's a good rating. So when we look at bonds, you have your certificates of obligation, you have your general obligations. Those are typically backed by a tax, your property tax, your interest and sinking tax. What Rod Pon brought up was the revenue tax, and typically you see those in your utilities, not necessarily all the time. The city was in a little bit of trouble in two thousand thirteen with one of their bonds. Wasn't because we hadn't paid it, was we hadn't met the compliance side. And one of the compliance things is you have to have enough revenue to cover your debt. And so at the time, the budget wasn't really reflecting, are we bringing in enough money to cover the debt? Ever since then, we not only cover our debt, but we paid most of them off. So when it comes to revenue bonds, you have to be able to illustrate, demonstrate, however you want to word it, that we can bring in that revenue to cover it. When you look at the general fund, and the general fund is your parks, your streets, your police department, admin, your court, your human resources. Basically, the, the general running of the city, you're not gonna go for a revenue bond unless you have a stack of cash to support it. You don't ever want to say you're gonna always have the revenue because as things change, well, I don't want to raise property taxes. Well, we have to have the revenue to cover that bond.
So this revenue has to be like that, like month after month? So should we have an emergency, like something costs us sixty thousand dollars or something? We have to put that in to be sure that the revenue's there?
We have to make sure that, that we're covered. And so what they do is, what they do is they, they look at your, your expenses and your revenues and they kind of say, okay, if, if an emergency happens, are you gonna be able to cover? They're not worried about the emergency. They're worried about their debt payment. They want their money. And so if you have these emergencies, they're gonna be like, are they gonna be able to pay? Are they gonna be able to cover that bond? What about next year? A lot of revenue accounts, I'm sorry, a lot of revenue bonds also require that you have a, what they call a reserve. But basically, you have a separate account, a checking account, a reserve account, that money's put aside. The city had that for the two thousand three reserve. When we paid that off last year, the first thing I thought was we could have used the money in that reserve to pay the final payment, but we didn't. We had budgeted it accordingly, we paid it accordingly, and I was right online looking up, okay, Water Development Board, what can we do with the money? What is our compliance? What is? And the first thing they said is always put it back to what you borrow. So we put that money back into our utilities, our water. And you guys secured it to help do the matching for the generator grant for FEMA, for the water department, for the wells in the field. Automatically turning that around, money wouldn't have to budget for money we don't have to worry about. And if we get the grant, we're gonna have generators out in our fields for hopefully that day that never comes. Super exciting. So there's a lot of stipulations and guidelines when we go out for debt. It's not, we're gonna sit here, oh, let's borrow three million, this is what we want to do. It's no, we want to borrow money. What is it gonna cost us? We bring in a bond consultant. It's a whole process. This isn't two meetings and we're approved. And then depending on the level, it may have to go out for vote.
There's one other issue to think about. The state legislature doesn't like cities. The state legislature looks at big cities like Houston and Dallas, being Democratic, and still always trying to beat up on them. What they've done is they've limited the ability of cities to raise debt year by year. So there's a certain, a small percentage that you can raise your debt. So you can't suddenly say, okay, I want So you can't suddenly say, okay, I want to make my debt ten percent better, ten percent more, that's too much. So you have to do it incrementally, year by year, to be able to get in the limits legislature has passed. So it's something you've got to start working on so you can get to a level that you can, you know, pay for that project that you want.
Little by little, but in order to move that direction or any direction, we have to have a plan. I I don't want to go borrow money like this city's done in the past. For those of you who don't know the history, the city borrowed between one and three million every three to five years. And then they would roll their debt into one bond to try and reduce the interest in the payments. So we haven't taken any type of debt out since two thousand twelve. In two thousand twelve, that was the last grant loan that the Water Development Board provided the city. So since then, we haven't borrowed, we haven't, you know, we've only been paying back. Which goes to what were we at with our debt? So when I started with the city in two thousand thirteen. The city had nine million eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-two cents or ninety-two dollars in debt. We had a lot of debt, our budget was about ten million, which is why the Water Development Board came back with, huh? Can you really afford your debt? I mean, your budget is almost the same level as your debt. Over the past ten years, we've been paying it off. So currently, our debt is three million seventy-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. That includes our interest. We can't pay it off early, they don't like that. They don't even like us to pay the couple days before because then they send us instant check because, you know, the interest doesn't calculate correctly. But it's really, really refreshing to see the general fund. The debt for the general fund is six hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-five cents. I mean, that's remarkable. That means that from our general fund perspective, we have the ability to borrow. And it not have a significant impact on the residents because we don't have, we're not making up the debt we have. We've paid it off and now we can be exactly where we're at by taking a little bit more on. The Water Department has two million four hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety cents. This is one that's really hard because this is one of our top priorities when we look at our strategic plan is infrastructure. So they have a high debt. Those bonds are currently backed. So then we have to bring in enough money, not only to maintain operations and maintenance and, you know, the cost of everything. But also to cover our, our debt. Do you need a break, Chris?
Please, yes. I got her all. Then ask my sister to bring my paper, so let me just text real quick and then I'll.
While you're doing that, I'll check on Councilwoman Johnson, did you have any comments or questions so far?
I don't have any comments.
Very good.
Good.
So. Mr. Fielder had asked about being tax exempt and we are, as a city, we are tax exempt and the interest rates are currently low. So that is a benefit. We are actively trying not to go out for debt. The whole intention of the discussions and the planning isn't to jump in, you know, bed with a huge bond. Is to say, hey, what do we need? So as infrastructure funding is coming down, the ARPA funds come down, you have all of these resources. We can actually apply for them and kind of know this is what I want. In order to do that, we have to have that plan. Our wastewater treatment plan, that is an estimated four point six million a year ago. Having a grant that can fully cover that, which we have been made aware of. Is no debt. It's going out for the fund that allows us to complete the project. But we have something to present, we have a feasibility study, we know exactly what needs to be fixed, we know exactly what it's going to. Phase out, one, two, how we can move it around, and we have an engineer stamp of approval. Those are important things when we apply for grants, is making sure our documentation. I mean, we're competing with the big leagues, we're competing with those companies and those cities. That, you know, have all of this prepared ahead of time. So when we're looking at the debt and we talk about debt, I don't want anyone to think, oh, yeah, next year, we're going to go out for a bond. But that's not the plan, it's never been the plan. But the reality is, as we've gone through all these strategic plan meetings is, hey. We we got to start prioritizing, we need to, how are we going to get the money? And if I can sit up here and tell council and the public is, hey, this grant opportunity came up. Or, hey, this infrastructure bill, we actually have a little loophole that we can get in and get some money. Is a lot better than me sitting here, we need to go out for debt. We're just trying to get it put together so that everyone understands. Yes, we have reserves, yes, we're financially doing well, but we need to plan. Because we can't keep operating off of how we're. And it's really hard because, you know, well, we don't want to raise taxes or, you know, we don't want to make changes or. But at the same time, someone may say, I don't want to raise taxes, but how are you going to treat your employees? What are you going to do for your employees? How are your employees being paid? Well, most of that money out of the general fund is taxes. If you're concerned about employees and their pay and their benefits and retention and keeping employees. You've got to balance it out, if that means raising taxes a little bit to meet that market value. And that's one of the things listed on your list of questions is employees. And understanding the wages and benefits. I know that you referenced the market. I'm not against market value, but I'm a realist. Alpine is not the market. Alpine is different, Alpine is unique. So when the S P D C recommended that, hey, we'll help you with the cost of living for Alpine. Heck, yeah, what does it cost a resident of Alpine to live in Alpine? So then we look at what we're starting our wages at and what it's costing them for housing, for food, for, you know, insurance, for childcare that doesn't exist. Looking at the true value of Alpine and then looking at the market. But if we don't know what it offer or what it looks like to live in Alpine, it's really hard to look at the market value. Because I can tell you right now, when I look up wages, which I I do regularly because I'd like to know, what's someone getting paid? What's another city manager getting paid? And I go in there and I look at San Antonio, you're not going to say I'm comparable to San Antonio. But San Antonio has a market value rate. So when I look at other cities and I, and the private industry, that's a whole nother like wealth of information that. How do we compete with the private industry? So when I look at employees on your question here and I look at wages, we started our employees off at thirteen fifty. I've been working on, once again, this is all creating a spreadsheet. Doing a correlation. The last time the city raised their rate from ten to thirteen fifty, they didn't take into consideration that employee at thirteen fifty. So I got hired day one, I'm making thirteen fifty, I've been here four years, I'm making thirteen fifty. That upset the morale, that upset our, our, our team. So in order to to present that type of, you know, information to the council, hey, let's raise the starting pay. Let's put in some parameters, a ladder, so employees know if I do A, B, and C, I can move up. But also look at those who are already there. So if I'm starting at thirteen fifteen, when we raise the rate to fifteen, how are we going to compensate? And then everyone above it. You know, it's not a significant increase, the higher you get, but it's still an increase. You don't want, you know, your employee who's been here ten years making less than an employee who's been here today.
At what point do employees cap?
At what point do employees cap? There is no formal cap. There is a salary. There's not a cap because we always, the cost of living. So all employees, when council recommends it, gets a cost of living. So your salary range, sorry, that was what I was looking for, your salary range on your job description. Maybe say it's capped, as you want to say, thirty-one thousand. But they're not at the ability to move up because there's certain skills or there's things that they haven't done, but they're at that thirty-one thousand. But we're not going to deny the cost of living. The cost of living is going to still continue. But hopefully, as the directors and we start working together, they'll see, okay, I can't have a worker one five years. And making forty thousand when he, you know, the limit is thirty-one. So I can kind of see where you're going, we don't have an official cap, we have a salary range. But that salary range. Is only structured right now, really, when someone applies, they look at it like, oh, I can make that much. It's not fully understanding, which goes to another thing on our, our, our list here, when you talk about employees is. Is redesigning Alpine and our employees. When you talk about the intention, you talked about employees. Looking at it as a former, current employee, worked in different government agencies. Is understanding that I have the support for my directors. And understanding that if I want to move up, my director is going to support it, I'm not going to sit as a worker one. We had a meter reader who worked for the city for seventeen years and never went any further. There was no push, we want our employees to move up, we want them to do better, but it's scary because it's more responsibility sometimes. So it's redesigning our job descriptions, it's looking at our, our pay packages so that they can see. I mean, we have directors right now that honestly are like, hey, we do need to make a change, let's start making these improvements. I'm going to point to Daryl because Daryl's active to trying to to get him structured so that he can move up his employees. But at the same time. He's rewarding them, they're taking on more responsibility, they're getting more training. It's not, I hire someone and they come in and, oh, yeah, you're my best friend, I'm going to give you a raise. It's no, you're getting a raise because you've accomplished or you succeeded in something.
Megan, there's no longevity.
There is, so longevity pay is four dollars a month. For every month you've worked for the city combined. After I've been employed with the city for ninety days for, for the first paycheck in December. In order to be, to get your first longevity.
It's not a once a year longevity.
Yes, it's just once a year. There are some requirements to that, I mean, it's not just money we give out, there's a process and there's a procedure to it. But we have employees who work for the city and then they leave and then they come back. We include that gap, we include from when they worked the first time and the second time.
Restart them over.
We do not restart them over.
Which is good, I think that's good.
When you look at benefits. We have, you know, the health insurance, the dental insurance and the vision. Our health insurance, because we know what we pay, we know the struggles with the cost of health insurance. The city covers fifty percent of the dependent coverage. So instead of, you know, you having to pay four hundred dollars, you know, a month, you're paying two hundred. And of course, we divide that out. So the city is already picking up an additional cost because we want your family in care. We want you to be covered and in order to help you, because we know we don't pay you, we provide that for families. We do cover dental and vision. And we have the task card. This is an additional five hundred dollars a year to use for like doctor visits, over the counter medications, your prescriptions. Of course, we have uniforms for some of the departments. We have vehicles that employees take home, especially for on-call. So we have a really good start to our employee benefit package, doesn't mean it can't improve. For me, one of my goals is retirement. I'd like to see employees retire from the city and get something from it. Currently, when they retire from the city, there's no health insurance benefits, we don't, we don't even offer you, you know, a couple hundred bucks a month. You only get what you put into T M R S and what the city matches.
What's a city match?
Two for one.
So the employee comes back, excuse. And you give them credit for that. What do you do when you?
Well, that's interesting.
What do you do when you have, say, a director? That resigned. Comes back and there's no director spot, so he goes down as a water meter and he's making maybe more than the present. Director because he had been with the city for, say, twenty-five years.
If he's being hired in the same type of position, he wouldn't be hired back at the same rate. We typically don't hire employees back at the same rate. Unless there's an identical field to match, they wouldn't be hired.
So the only thing that you count their time for is like seniority longevity, but not.
Just longevity. So they they do start over, just not on longevity. Moving on, okay. So currently, when we look at employees, we have eighty-six employees. Ninety-one are currently budgeted. There is a few more budgeted that aren't included in the version because we budget for lifeguards. These are seasonal employees that take over our whole products for the summer. Because they're seasonal, I did not include them. I don't have an updated retention rate, I was working on that over the past couple of weeks and then with being sick, I do apologize. But we did make the initial presentation in September and I can provide that updated to council after the meet or later on this week. Retention wise, we're not doing horrible, we are below the national average. We've actually just recently continued to hire. We've hired eleven employees since October. We do have some turnover, we do have employees we hire who don't like the job and they quit. It's hard because you don't want them to. But sometimes something else comes up. We've had two of those in the past couple of months where we've hired them, they lasted about a week and then they've stepped down. And it's not the job themselves, it's they they do find another opportunity. The city as a whole, and I'm talking not just Alpine city people, but, you know, other businesses. We just recently, and America brought it up at one of her meetings, had a discussion with how do we get employees, how do we retain them? What can we do as a community to get people engaged to stay here and work? One of the things that was brought up was, you know, if there was some training that the S P D C or the workforce could provide. And then when they apply for, you know, the city or the county or Seoul Ross, they have this little certificate. It's like, hey, it's kind of like a ranking system, hey, that's two extra points. It's a step up and someone who comes in with no type of certification or training. We did just hire someone for the street department, so that was pretty exciting. We do have our applications posted, yes, and our job postings. I had mentioned once before, and and right now it's a big push all over the United States. Is how we advertise, how we discuss, how we post, how we present ourselves. One of the seminars I went to with the, the International City Managers Association, literally the guy started his thing with. If you post your job description as your job posting, you need another job. Because that is literally the one thing everyone used to do, we're all guilty, Alpine's guilty of it. Well, we've changed the format, we want to entice them, we want to give them a little bit of what the job is requiring. But we want to say, hey, these are your benefits, you know, you know, he, he used the word, you know, warm and fuzzy picture, you know, if it's animal control. Put some dogs and cats up there, but you want to pull them in, there's got to be something that they see and go, hey, that looks interesting. Well, we've already started working on that. And then we're really utilizing more than just our website and trying to get the word out there. But we're not the only ones. There are currently eighty-nine finance director positions posted on the Texas municipal league. I get the little reminders of, hey, are you looking for a job? And so, you know, it's like, hey, what's going on out there? I mean, there's hundreds of jobs posted, T M L is a big one for us. And then using the associations and making sure we have the memberships with these associations. Like the Water Utilities Association, so we can start advertising to those specific groups of people. I think I covered everything on your employees, but if I don't ask questions. When we look at the wastewater and water, our wastewater treatment plant and water. When you think about the annual cost to maintain that plant, so we budget what we would consider the annual cost. This is what it's going to cost to maintain it. In reality, we know that that's not true because we don't budget and there's not a line item for the, oh. Items. The, we didn't plan, we didn't prepare, and now we have a major leak, we have, you know, an issue. So one of the things when you're looking at the annual cost to maintain. It's truly understanding where we're at with our systems. And this is hard because we don't have that, that plan. We don't have a good map of our system. We don't have a good number of, how many lines do we have, what are the sizes of the lines, what are the water meters? So our software we use for utility billing does have all of these meters based on residence. And over two thousand sixteen to seventeen, when we transitioned from the old software to the new software. We transitioned hard, not only did we transition once and then have to go back and put in a month's worth of data in three days to do billing. But then we transitioned again and not everything transitioned right. And not everything transitions right. So we're still having the workers come up and be like, well, no, there's a meter right here. And, you know, take a picture of it. And we go into our system and we're like, well, there's no meter. We don't even have that meter number. So properly documenting and, and, and understanding everything we have is a significant thing that we need to work on. Because I can't tell you where all the water meters are. Um, not a single one of our employees probably could at this point. And there's always that one that seems to pop up with, well, this has been a vacant field for twenty years, but there's a meter right here. And so it's kind of understanding where we're at with that. And it's the same with our sewer lines. What do we have in the ground and what is it made of? Um, you've heard the, the term orange bird. Um, this is what, World War Two? Ideally, it should have been, been actually like replaced over the years and it just hasn't. Um, Council Stokes had stopped by and I know she had provided some information. I'm gonna just throw it out there for you. When we fix our leaks and when we were fix our sewer backups, um, the public and the council need to understand. They're not going in there to fix and replace. And some of the information that, uh, Ms. Stokes brought up was. Well, if we go in and we fix and it's a ten inch leak and we fix another ten inches on each side. That means we fixed, you know, a whole thirty feet, not inches, I'm sorry, thirty feet. If we did that every time, we would ideally replace our whole system.
Well, see, I read that and it said it took them fifteen years. They would do, they'd fix the initial twenty foot here, twenty foot here. And it sounds good on a piece of paper. And I understand we probably just can't run in there and do that, but if. In the future, if we ever get them fixed, maybe we should think about that.
I think this is definitely something we plan towards and we have those procedures in place that when we fix a leak. That we do address additional footage. The reason we don't do it now is because our employees are so focused on fix and move to the next, fix and move to the next. There's also the correlation with the other utilities. It's making sure that when we fix the twenty foot on each side, that, okay. There's a gas line and it's not running the same direction. And we have that conversation with the gas department. Or you know what? Uh, Eddie, I know we just paved this road, but we really want to replace so many feet. And having that conversation, I think that it, it is a great moving forward plan. For me to look at is step one is let's go ahead and, and hire someone, a contractor. Deal with the huge sections of areas we know we have issues with or as we plan and organize, we find out about. And then have it where we know, okay, when we go in for a leak, we're gonna replace more. The second side of that is material. If we know we're gonna play forty feet at a time or fifty feet at a time, we want to make sure we have the material. Material is not always easy to obtain. Well, you want to make sure that.
Call us, right?
Yes, okay. Let's take a five minute break.
How are you feeling?
Hey Jerry, since you're there listening, can you please raise the fact that it's a quarter to seven? And the Dollar General is still doing construction? Okay. Now, where were we?
First of all, we were following Toma and what's on our agenda.
And there's lots, okay. Um, so when we look at the other items that were requested for the water and wastewater, um, so the number of pumps and ages. Um, I am currently working to get a better understanding of our pumps. Um, there are. A pump for each well, but then the boosters are pumps as well. Um, the age is kind of funny because the pumps we replace on a regular basis. Um, when they like, so last year we went to the conservancy plan because, I'm sorry. Yeah, conservancy plan, because we went, um, and had the, the Sunny Glen had two pumps go down. We don't necessarily replace the whole kit and caboodle of the pump. We replace what is needed to keep it going. Um, so I've been working on that. And the number of tanks and ages, we don't have the documentation on the ages, but there are current eleven tanks. Um, those are in the Sunny Glen area. Those are in the Muskees area. They're off of Old Marathon Highway and they're up on the hill.
Um, so basically on all of these questions, it would be. Smart to say that there's no way for us to even guesstimate. How much time we have left on pumps, on, on anything, because basically records were not kept as to any of it.
No, and you can really never estimate a pump because your number one pillar is like. It, it's a hit and miss. Last year we lost two because of lightning. Um, and there's different types of pumps. So when you're looking at it, you have your pumps specifically for your water. Um, to the movement of water around town, your booster pumps, your, your well pumps. Um, but then you have your lift station pumps. Um, in one year, the Holiday and Lift Station, we call it that. Um, because it's right by the Holiday and Lift, or Hotel, we went through five pumps. Because they just kept blowing out because of the material coming in. Um, and we had that conversation with council. We set some money aside. Um, we've done a feasibility study. What's the best way to go? Um, our system is gravity fed. So it's kind of like, where's our workhorses? Who's working the most? Um, is it one season, it's Muskees and all the water's coming in from that area and those pumps are going faster and faster and faster? Or is it Sunny Glen? Um, we also have wells out at Muskees that actually have pumps in them, but aren't operational. They've either never been maintained, they've never been replaced. So it's kind of looking at, okay, do we want to continue? Do we want to bring those back up to, to speed? So when it comes to documentation. Um, there are what I call these lovely blue binders that will say Muskees. And you grab that binder thinking everything you need to know about the Muskees well field is gonna be in there. And you open it up and you're excited like, wait a minute, there's like nothing. Uh, so it's doing a lot of research. Um, not saying that we don't have the documentation. It's just not easy to access. Um, I've gone through documents, um, that I've had access to. The water department has been working on it. Our last, like, go-to will be Geo, um, hoping that we have to earn our documents and our resources. So we're hoping that the material's there. It's just tracking it down. It, it's not in one place.
So we have a, a hopes of getting a better tracking system going?
Yes, so one of the things that I had made into council, um, when I sent out the original email was going out for. RFI, a request for, I think I told you, an RFP for software. We're kind of at our wits end when it comes to our utility billing because they're constantly having to ask what's going on, why isn't it working? And then we have to wait. Um, so instead of doing an RFP for utility software. I want to present to council what is called an RFI, which is a request for information. So basically, it would go out to any software vendor that could hopefully provide us feedback on what services they provide. I'm not asking for cost rate. I just want to narrow down the thousand emails I get on a regular basis with, hey. Try this stuff or hey, we can help you with this, but we can't help you with that. We want to make sure that whatever software or softwares that we go to can address these types of issues. Like a meter inventory. A water line inventory. It may be a lot of manually entering and getting things up to speed. But if it's something besides an Excel spreadsheet that we're trying to create on the spot is a lot better. So that is the idea, is to move into a direction where we can track. Because I know one of the questions was the map for water leaks. We would love it. Right now, one of the resident's suggestion was to put the map up and take a blue marker and just circle the whole city. I'm kind of in a green. Circle the whole city. Um, we have. The water leak investigates and the work orders. But they're not always associated with an address. They may be, I got called in on Friday or over the weekend and I went to a leak in Sunny Glen. Okay, where in Sunny Glen? Um, all of our accounts are associated with a service address and a mailing, mailing address. Not so-and-so's field because it's a main line coming through. Or, you know, a mile off of seventeen oh three. So pulling all those work orders and looking at that map, someone has to manually go in and, and kind of pinpoint them. Whereas if we had some type of, of software or even just, you know. Really just anything at this point that, you know, we could put in that information and not have to have it tied to something. Then we could go in and develop stuff like that. Currently, we can't. I mean, we can print out, you know, five years worth of leak work orders. And then someone could sit there and manually take a blue dot and put them up there. Um, but we're working on it. Um, not overnight, but we're gonna get there. Um. That kind of addresses everything on that one. Um, one of the last things or two last things is the streets. Um, so when we look at the streets, um, these are unique. Um, I know several years ago, we had about one thousand forty-five blocks. Um, we have about one thousand forty-nine. As we've annexed property, of course, that brings in new roads. So when you look at the cost to rebuild, um, I could have sat there and I could have gone through and I could have estimated. Materials, time, labor. But I'm gonna be realistic with you. The city hasn't paved in ten years. The city has contracted out all of our paving. So the city has not rebuilt roads. We have seal coded. So when I look at what it costs to rebuild. Back when we, um, hired a third-party vendor. The cost to build per square foot was two dollars and seventeen cents to five dollars and thirty-three cents. It depends on what they're doing, how much base is having to be put down, um, type of material and stuff like that. You recently received a quote, um, from one of the local vendors to pay one to two blocks. Taking that quote and looking at what he's charging us to build one to two blocks. You're looking at per block thirty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. That's a block. So those are.
Trying to tell us we need to multiply that times a thousand and forty-nine.
And you can have the whole city paved. And I'm pretty sure there are tons of vendors who would come out here to do it.
They'd be standing in line.
Um, so though, that's more realistic. Instead of me trying to, to give you estimates based off of our, our operating budget, we haven't rebuilt. The city has not pulled up roads and rebuilt them. Um, we've still coated. The average cost to seal coat based off of just standard labor, um, the material, the cleanup. Um, the sweeping, all of the things that go with it, you're looking at almost nine thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. A block.
So this, the city never had it in-house. So we were paving.
Prior to me, and, and speaking with Eddie, um, the city did pay. When, when I think Eddie started here, remember Eddie's been here forty-one years. Um, the city did, they balanced it out. They would, they would pave and then they would seal coat. When I started with the city, there was a public outcry for the roads. It's every year. I, I mean, I, I feel like we need to get ahead of it. Um, it was decided instead of the city trying to pave and seal coat. It would be easier if we focused the city on seal coating and brought in a third party to pave. But then when you look back at it, you're looking at, you know, ten years of the city seal coating and not paving. At, at, I mean, five dollars and thirty-three cents a square foot. And this year, based off of the estimates, thirty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-three. We can't, I could not tell you and, and feel confident that what I predict or estimate for the city to pave. Would be correct. Because I'm looking at what we've literally paved. Um, we, we had a two million dollar contract. We've had a five.
And how many blocks was that?
I'd have to remember that off the top of my head.
So going, going, say, in the next five years, we go with our strategic planning and we get into the wastewater system and all that. It's probably not something that's going to be feasible for us to be able to get everything we need to do in-house.
I don't know.
Paying. We're talking machines, we're, I mean, equipment, whatever the.
You're absolutely correct, but at the same time, I'm not gonna tell you that, no, we couldn't. Because we're, we'd be creating jobs. Because we would need specialized equipment, we would need specialized employees. We would have to hire those at a higher rate who could operate this machinery. Um, is it ideal? Maybe not in five years. But it is something that the city could, should consider, because then you're gonna spend millions and millions year after year. And without having a plan where if we cut up a road, I can't call that vendor back and say, hey, can you come pave it? Because we, we pulled it up. So Eddie comes in and he patches it. And that's why you have the nice little. I, I mean, I'm not, I am not gonna predict the future and if it's something the city doesn't want to do, then that's good. We, we don't bring it back in and we, we go a different direction. But I know that council and some people have said, hey, what if we did it in-house? What if we had people who could just go and do it? We weren't dependent on someone else's schedule. That's the second part of it, is we're dependent on someone else. So it's on their schedule. So a one-year contract was three years to complete. Because we were dependent on someone else's schedule. And if we're not the priority on that schedule, then it just year after year after year. And then we don't see that accomplishment year one. But it's, it's discussion. It's definitely something that, you know, as we continued, I mean, the strategic plan is gonna change. It's gonna keep developing year after year after year. This is just year one. This is like, hey. Why don't we try it? Why don't we see what the public wants? What counts in order? What direction do we want to go? If it's not something we think we can feasibly do in the next five years, then that's a discussion we have. Or if it's something like, no, I think we really need to bring it in-house and then see what the cost estimate is and the savings. And do we lease the equipment? Do we buy the equipment? Do we give the employees the opportunity to advance and train on, you know, the equipment to improve themselves? It's all discussion.
So although it's wonderful to have. So although it's wonderful to have these discussions with the public and our citizens and all that, the city of Alpine probably has enough to keep us going for the next twenty years of what absolutely needs to happen without hearing from the citizens on the, I mean.
We have big projects. We have a bit to do. But we're, we're putting it out there. Where we're basically saying, we know what you want done. This is what it's going to cost and this is how we can move forward with it. And then it comes to the reprioritizing. You know, maybe one year, you know what, I'd rather have infrastructure, my water than a paved road right now. Or maybe another year, it's, you know what, I want my paved road, I don't want. It's balancing it all out.
You talk about creating jobs. When you create jobs, you have to have people that want to work. And we're in a world now that nobody wants to work. You have to remember that too.
And you're exactly-
Nine thousand dollars an hour. They're going to get a hangnail and go home.
So when the vendor couldn't pave in that year and it took him three, he didn't have employees. And so, but these are things we discuss and we we actually have that, you know, sit down and as some people say, those hard, you know, decisions, hard discussions. I have no problem with always contracting out paving. I don't think anyone really does. The issue is the accountability to the paving. A one-year contract taking three years because we're dependent on you and your schedule. It's, it's, you know, when the, I I don't remember what resident it was, but they say, hey, who oversaw the the laying of the pipes on seventeen oh three and highway one eighteen? Who monitored that to make sure the rocks didn't go back in the hole? It's making sure that we lay very strict and precise guidelines moving forward that, hey, if we're going to do this, there's going to be a formal contract. The city did not always operate off contracts. The city didn't off operate off of state legislative rules. You know, payment bonds, if they don't follow through. I I'm pretty sure there's a number of projects that we, we asked for and then paid for and ended up with nothing. I mean, they're moving forward with that. But the whole key is just moving forward and getting things done to the best of our ability with the resources we have. And when we talk about not having employees, and you're right, some people that don't want to work. But if I come to Alpine and you hire me right now as a worker one, you're going to pay me thirteen fifty. But if Alpine redesigns and then we have a heavy operator equipment and have it more specific, and I know that when you hire me, you're going to hire me at twenty-five, and I have the the certifications and and the required documentation, and then I know I'm going to move up. You, you get a few more feet in the door. Right now, we have people come in and it's like, oh, I can, you know, operate some of the equipment. You know, there's no guarantee they can until we get them in the door and 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 try them out. But if we line it out and and ask for more and be more specific, you may have those people who are like, you know what, I I don't want the old field anymore. I don't want to hop from site to site to site. You know, I want to be home with my family. But we have to design it that way. We're not designing that. Because I know I'd pay twenty-five dollars to operate ahead of you.
Thirty-two fifty, I'll do it.
The last one that Councilmember Rodriguez had was estimate of when the rate studies will be completed.
Yes, so at the last workshop, I brought this up. Um, so we're working with Communities Unlimited. Marcie's not here to correct me. Um, so what they're doing, I always get the name wrong. Um, what they're helping us with is a rate study. And they're looking at our current rates, which they had to go back and update because the council did approve a slight increase in October. Um, and what we could ideally bring in year after year moving forward if we made adjustments to our current rate. So basically, they're taking our expenses and our revenue and they're looking at our fees. And if we increase our fee, what would that additional revenue be? What would it provide extra for us? But ideally, we could apply to a bond or debt, however you want to word it. Or maybe it's one of those, okay, if we know we're going to bring in an extra four hundred thousand, let's put it in the piggy bank. Let's put it aside and 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 put it for a matching grant or put it for something more specific. It doesn't always have to be debt.
What fees are they looking at? Can you clarify that for everybody?
So the utility fees include um the meter fee. So on your water bill, you get charged what we call a basic fee. It's your meter and then um, your minimum usage, which is two thousand gallons, um, which is, I believe, eight dollars and thirty-three cents. If I do that in my head, yes. Um, and then, of course, the water structure is actually based off of your usage. So zero to two is what we call your minimum bill. It's what you're going to get charged every month, whether you use zero or you use two thousand. And then from two thousand to five, five to it goes up. Um, it's the same on the gas side. So on the gas side, you have the same, what we call the the city rate. Um, we raise that to ten dollars. So it's a minimum fee charged for everyone to help them with exactly what we've been talking about maintenance. This is additional money that gets put aside, including what we charge, which of course fluctuates month to month for the actual gas usage. The only difference in the gas usage um is on commercial side. So our big users like Soul Ross and the school district, sometimes the hospital, they actually get lower rates the more they use. So there's this kind of reversed. Um, and these are your your base rates every month. Some of the other fees that are included are your tap, if you're getting a new tap. Um, we did increase those slightly, um, extension fees. Um, I know on the gas side, if you retire, um, those are a fee. Um, of course, if you cut into, if we have to cut into a road, there's a fee associated with that. Um, keeping, you know, there's tons of fees. Um, those are the basic ones that come every month. And then, of course, you have like your bulk sewage rate. Um, so our septic haulers, they actually get charged a fee to dump. Um, dumping is very limited, um, because of our current condition. We don't have septic haulers out there every day. Um, it is monitored and regulated on how many we can receive. And then on the days where the plant is significantly suffering, um, like we did last week, um, they don't, they're not allowed to dump at all.
That's where the trucks take it out there.
They take it out there. Um, if they're not dumping here, they go to Valentine.
Right.
So Valentine does have a deal as well. So so those are some of the basic fees. And then bulk water. Um, but I think unless there's another question, Chris, I kind of tried to cover everything all over the map. I'm sorry, it took up so much time, but it's okay.
Oh, but you didn't have a manager before.
I know, I know, I did it on purpose.
And Councilmember Johnson, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Guess not.
You're muted.
He flipped us off.
We can't hear you.
I think we all ought to go on Zoom because it would be very entertaining. Just sit right here. I think it's good, Megan. I think that's a lot of math and, you know, I lose you on all that. But I do, I do agree that we're now at least having these conversations where we're thinking about all this stuff. Because we're never going to get anywhere if we don't have these conversations. I mean, everybody, you know, the town wants this all fixed. But how do we go about that? And they've got to realize it doesn't just happen. I mean, nobody's going to show up at your house at eight to fix all your water and redo my driveway. I mean, it's not happening. But with these conversations, it gets the ball started.
Well, and it's important, I mean.
It's got to be done. I mean, we can't, it's got to be done.
And I can make it all rosy and pretty, but numbers are black and red. There's no, you know.
That words are rosy.
Okay, are we ready to move on? Yes. All right, information or discussion item number eight. City manager.
So this is, discuss the implementation of a new parking plan on Guyego and Fifth Street in front of Our Lady of the Peace Church. And we've actually um had several people reach out. I know Councilman Sandate, um Stokes, um, and also the priest at the Catholic Church has all reached out. Um, Daryl's been working with everyone. Um, and there are some concerns. Um, let me pull up. So Father Pablo is concerned. Um, his, and I'm I'm going to read what he initially had said, his concern for the elderly and physically handicapped. Um, could the city rezone the front part of the church, which is on Guyego Street? Um, of course, it is currently a no parking zone. Um, they did create the handicap parking on the other side. Um, but they're still concerned with people being able to come and go through the church. And they do have a large elderly population that does attend services and then other events that happen there. Um, I think that this is an opportunity to work with the church and compromise on not only the safety aspect, but on their um congregation as well. So that they have some ease of access to allow those who who physically can't get there as easily. Um, I know that they would like it rezoned completely. Um, but I I do think, you know, we could look at putting the no fire zone on a different part of the, on Fifth Street going up. Um, so there would be the access to the church as well. Um, Daryl is working um on getting that map and kind of things updated and Geo, of course, is working on the ordinance side. I think that is something that we should look at and and prepare for. Um, I mean, you do have, we have a large congregation there. And we want to make sure we try to accommodate all.
And I agree, don't, I, it doesn't all have to be. I mean, there's going to have to be an area. I I, and I believe they understand that also. The people that contacted me understand. There's going to have to be a a fire zone, so some way to get into that church. Because you're sending the elderly. We're going to make a place for them to park and they're all going to be in there. I don't think they want it totally like it was, but they do want some adjustments made so these people feel comfortable trying to get in the church.
Yes, and then they're not trying to get rid of the the handicap parking on the side either. They're just looking for a compromise to allow those of a more significant nature to be closer to the church. I don't know how to word that.
And so it was actually the church that reached out and wanted this.
Yes, so the church reached out, Daryl has reached out, Judy has reached out. Yes. I I don't know if they contacted you, Chris, but there's been a significant kind of push.
Like on Fifth Street, he wants keep it a low parking on all the way from there to his house.
Yes.
And an ambulance can park there and the city police can park.
And they wouldn't have all the stairs to go up. They'd be right there inside.
And and I think we do have to work with them, but they also need to understand that when it, when each, when we get a new pastor, we can't be changing it. I mean, we changed it just recently because of another one. Another thing I had issues with and 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 not, not, not a major issue. But Dara was just doing traffic for free tacos. They need to understand that that may be something that can't happen. I mean, how long were you out there and how much traffic did we have? I mean, at one point, I saw it for blocks.
Right. So yeah, uh, from eleven thirty till twelve twenty when they ran out of tacos. But anyway, the the and I think I really, I'm totally understanding what you're saying. We can't continue. We've added a new priest. We can't change it. Um, I think we need to to be at a kind of uh stand our ground as far as any other changes. I think that area right in front of the church needs to be changed, the handicap parking. They created the the special uh sidewalk just for those vehicles. And according to uh Father Pablo's email, the ones that he's con- concerned about are the ones that are there on a daily, on the daily, either masses or praying, the, and those are the ones that are there consistently every day. The, he still wants, he 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 likes the handicap parking across the street on the north side. And he's, and he, he, when he was explaining it to me um, at his church in El Paso where he was at, he he said he constantly had the ambulance or police there. And they always use the 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 fire line. And so that's one of the, that's why we agreed that we, we need to keep that Fifth Street side red zone to keep anybody from parking there. And and uh it's for the good of the church and for the good of the congregation. But uh, yeah, I think that that area right in front of the church on on Guyego Avenue needs to be changed.
Could you check with EMS to make sure that that what do you call it, that slope down or that here?
No.
It's not going to be an issue.
No, it's 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 not an issue because we do that for the, all the funerals that we have. The, 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 the hearse is usually parked right there so that they can, they use that uh handicap ramp uh to just load up the, the, the gurney with the, with a casket. So I don't think it's a good problem, so.
And I was approached by the father. I was approached by two members of who are longtime members. They, they've had, they just have a concern about it.
Yeah.
So I called Megan. That's what started all this.
Does the church plan on helping, helping us, helping you uh deal with the parking issue there, making sure that they're not parking? I mean, are they ready to?
Yeah.
Perishioners?
Yes.
Park there.
Bet you. Yeah. And and he, like I said, he's very content with keeping that red zone uh marked red until uh unless there's something else, but I I I don't think there's anything else that he wants to, so.
Thanks, Carol, for messing with it. So it won't be presented as an ordinance until we, of course, get everything put together and reviewed. Um, but as part of what we talked about, the ordinances in that email was just kind of starting putting a process in place so that you're not blindsided with everything coming on the agenda. Um, but then I think this is an opportunity um to to work with them and they have a strong relationship. And they're very thankful for the police department. And so I definitely agree, we need to make sure we keep the fire zone um so that they have easy access. This is a discussion.
All right, Councilmember Johnson.
No comment.
All right, anybody else? All right, let's move on to action items. City manager, number one.
Approve the second and final reading of ordinances, I mean, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two dash zero one. An ordinance amending the Alpine Code of Ordinances, establishing chapter nine annexation, adopting an ordinance providing for additional annexation requirements in addition to those prescribed by state law. Um, this is the second and final reading that would approve it. Um, the big change is to provide additional notification to um the residents within two hundred feet of the properties being annexed.
Okay, I need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two dash zero one.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. This would be by mail, correct?
Yes. I was kind of hoping that somebody would be here to discuss this with us. This came up, I think, because of the issue with Dollar General. And it seems that people are only concerned when it personally affects them. I feel that we are already going above and beyond, you know, we're, we're doing what the state requires of us, plus them. All this information can be found on our website as to when planning and zoning meets. People need to keep up with what's going on a little bit. Uh, we're talking about added expense at this point. Correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but he, we don't get any reply from the letters that are already going out that we have to put out by the state.
That's rare.
I think that we need to put a little bit on the citizens too.
Any more discussion? All right, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, Stokes, Councilmember Johnson, how do you vote? Okay, so three in favor, one opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to action item number two, city manager.
Approve a special use permit application for the purpose of allowing the applicant Sassoon Baja Mix Culinary to obtain an alcohol license permit from the Texas Alcohol Alcoholic Beverage Commission to sell alcohol to restaurant guests. The property in question is located at nine oh one East Holland Avenue. The record property owner is Audi Coggins.
Okay, I need a motion.
My convention to approve the special use permit application.
I need a second. Okay, any discussion?
Do we know if they, they plan on keeping regular restaurant hours or are we talking, are we having something like Old Gringo that they'll quit serving at ten and they'll still stay and and serve alcohol till midnight?
So those are actually regulated by the state. Um, if they close their food services, they're allowed to operate an additional hour after the closure of the food. Unless they're an actual bar. I believe the Gringo is registered as a bar as well as
They're, they're, they're close at ten, they would be able to sell alcohol till midnight.
Okay, any other discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, unanimous, motion carries. All right, we've already taken care of action item number three. So let's move on to action item number four, city manager.
Approve the High Intensity Traffic Award with Haida. Um, just a little background, um. So I I brought you on the public to understand that we don't go out for money without your approval. Um, we may do a phase one just to get our foot in the door, but the actual grant application does go before council. And I think it's important that everyone understands you're going to start seeing a lot of these coming up as we get into our, I like to call it grant season. The Haida program has been with the city of Alpine for over twenty years. It is a fully funded grant that covers three employees um in, within the police department. And we are required to renew. Um, doesn't mean we're always gonna get it. Um, but twenty years in the running is pretty good. Um, this grant that we're applying for is gonna call it Grant Year Twenty Twenty-Three. It actually covers January of twenty-three to December of thirty-first of twenty-four. The grant total is two hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Okay, I need a motion.
So.
Okay, I need a second. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Councilmember Johnson is unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you. Action item number five, city manager.
Accept the Alpine Police Department twenty twenty-two racial profiling report. The City of Alpine Police Department is required annually to file a racial profiling report. Um, this is based off of the actual traffic stops that they made. It per in, oh, sorry. It contains such information as the reason for the stop, if searches were conducted, was paraphernalia or something seized. Um, and was an arrest made. It also starts off with acknowledging that the city does have a racial profiling policy um with our Alpine Police Department. Um, Darryl's team is required to annually report this, so it was important because I believe their deadline was March first. He's like, yeah, yeah. Um, and Darryl is here if you want to ask further questions. The report is public and it is included in your back.
Looks good. All right, motion. Any motion?
I mean, that we accept the racial profiling report for two twenty-two, twenty-two.
I need a second. Any discussion? Good job, Darryl.
I'm voting. Let's just vote. Let's just do this.
I don't blame you.
Yes, and it looks great. Thank you, dear. All right, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, and it carries you near. All right, good deal. We're on to council member. I'm in, Councilmember.
Uh, thanks, Darryl, as always. Thank you, Chris Rugea. You know, he does a lot of everything. Thanks, Megan, for your great time-consuming report that you put together, Charles.
That's it. We had a pretty good show. It was a good meeting.
Okay. Councilmember.
Um, I apologize for my cough and I hope it wasn't too distracting to you guys.
Okay.
Feel bad.
Okay.
Good comments. Okay, Councilmember Johnson?
Well, it was a great meeting. I um thank everyone for their support of my of me. And I think the city's on the right track and Megan certainly has lined out a good future for the city staff. And I look forward to great things in the future.
And then I also want to offer my thanks to everybody. Thank you for showing up. Thank you for staying. I know the last couple of meetings have lasted a while. Thank you, Darryl, for everything you do. And did you have something you wanted to say?
No.
Oh, okay. We want to leave. Okay, yes, so thank you all. For for what you do for Alpine. We do have a great future ahead of us. Thank you. All right, so that's gonna take us to item number eleven. So this brings us to item eleven, executive session. Pursuant to chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting for any posted agenda item or to receive the advice from the attorney as permitted by law. Tonight, the city council will recess into executive session pursuant to section five-five-one dot oh seven four Personnel Matters. May I get a motion in a second to recess into executive session? I need a motion.
I'll make the motion to recess.
Okay, I need a second. Okay, so we are gonna recess into executive session, so I have the motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we we will proceed to a vote. If you'd like to vote in favor of the motion, please indicate this by raising your right hand. Okay, unanimous, city secretary.
Thank you.
Motion. The motion to recess into executive session passes unanimously. We are recessing into executive session at seven twenty-four P. Okay, thank you, guys.
May I please have a motion and a second to reconvene into open session?
I move to reconvene.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to reconvene into open session, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed to no vote, there's no items to vote on. The motion to reconvene into open session has passed unanimously, we are reconvening into open session at eight thirty one P M. So this brings us to item number twelve, action after executive session. And there is no action, may I get a motion?
No, 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 she hasn't.
I have action. She has action. I make a motion to approve the parameters discussed in the executive session.
Okay, so we do have a motion to discuss the parameters.
To approve.
To approve the parameters discussed in executive session.
Okay, may I have a second? Second, so I have a motion and a second to approve the motion to.
To approve the parameters discussed in executive.
For the parameters discussed in executive session, that's what happens when y'all get me after eight thirty. All right, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed to a vote, if you would like to vote in favor of this motion, please indicate this by raising your right hand. Okay, so we have three motion passes. May I have a motion and a second with no vote to adjourn the meeting?